Today. And I'm in the office. So Mom is now in a state of living. My dad is not well. He's had surgery in January. So I go from work to take care of him. Because it's all, you know, my half-brother is in the suburbs. And so it's all on me. And they don't have any brothers or sisters. They're both on, my parents are both like children. So they're not pleasant, not happy. So I get, I get to do it. Thank you. I mean, it's, it's, the circle is life and it's due. We don't like it, but we do it. Are you, are you going to?
Uh, sorry.
I would work if I could. That was a new year. See, you know this, right? I guess it's completely. But being a student, it might be resolved. Um, this place, and I don't know why it's called this way. People can share their experiences on our social media channels. And so there's, I think, part of the way through, something else about that side because I think it's a way to, or my weather just looks a lot better. She requests me to watch it. Wait, she's got that thing off her show. Good. Yeah, I just need to feel like we're doing it right. Well, they, they, they're upset. So, um, but you guys, um, one, North West, I think, last week where it just kind of, and I just found out about this. Okay. I'll ask a question for Leo, but I think he's a super tough guy. I'm saying your name. I'll put it on my clipboard real quick. I was just like, I always try to like, see. It's almost as, uh, I want to make sure that we're not saying this. They would break something else. Like you're trying to make a disentery, but I'm seeing it coming. It's very funny. Is camouflage that we drive? I know, yeah. I mean. I think we're recording video. I wasn't very many of them, but I was just kind of in the background watching. We'll see, we'll see how it goes. If it doesn't look really that fine, if we just.
I'm looking for them. I don't see them. I'm certain they're.
Looks like we got three folks in front of y'all.
Oh, thank God. Let me see if I can try to track down.
Okay, okay. And the books are already, we have a plate, so.
Do I look that bad?
All right, we're all good. We're all good. So they're gonna do their first part before I come up, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. 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 Oh, come on. I got you. Thank you for asking. Yeah, yeah, I saw you were, uh, so, uh, you're so long ago. Oh, well, it was, I mean, they didn't have their, they didn't take the toe. Yes, it was spreading. And it could have taken more. So we're still not out of the woods yet. When you're. How'd it go? I heard you had a problem now.
We will call to order the December 12th meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College. We have three public comments. The first is by Andrew Teeter. You have a three-minute opportunity.
Okay. Hello. Good evening, everybody. My name's Andrew Teeter. I live in Fort Worth. I'm a former teacher at Fort Worth ISD. I was an educator for eight, eight years in different capacities. So, and I'm here for ICE out of Tarrant County, organization in Fort Worth. I would like to review something that was presented here in November at the last meeting about the need for the Tarrant County College District to adopt a sanctuary campus resolution. So the following was presented by another organizer, Cindy Mata. According to an article by the Texas Tribune, it was reported in 2013 that in TCCD alone, 2,100 students within the district are undocumented. The state of Texas currently in support of the 60-by-30 plan, which has the overarching goal of increasing the total amount of Texans with college degrees to 60% and 60% by year 2030. So with this in consideration, it's the obligation of all Texas institutes of higher education to create a means of ensuring that all of its students, including its undocumented students, attain their education success. This change would aid in achieving the goal of 60-by-30. So as of July 2019, the state has only experienced a rise of 3.2% growth in degrees awarded when the plan was enacted in 2018. So the report by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board says further actions are necessary, and supporting sanctuary campuses for the undocumented student population is one of those actions to ensure Texas can meet that goal. Further consideration as to why the district ought to adopt a sanctuary campuses resolution is that a lack of resolution would allow collusion between TCCD, law enforcement, and ICE, the Immigration Customs Enforcement, which in regards to the disclosure of students' private information, is a clear violation of federal FERPA law. The FERPA law severely limits disclosure of student records, as recognized by the Attorney General, and it restricts it to even local law enforcement without student consent. So the police chief of TCCD, Lee Dietrich, stated in an article in the Collegian, "TCC is an open college. Anyone can come onto the campus whether they have a warrant or don't." So she continues, "As far as federal agents are concerned, they could call TCC police as courtesy, but ICE officers or any external law enforcement officers are not required to tell TCC police before coming onto campus or arresting somebody. This is extremely concerning, as it alludes to the fact that there are no measures in place to ensure TCCD complies with FERPA in regards to ICE attaining undocumented student information from the district. So we strongly encourage you to consider adopting a sanctuary campus resolution. If TCCD is truly committed to promoting an inclusive learning environment for all of its students, our organization, ICE out of Tarrant County, is always open to further discussing the issue." Thanks.
I'm Dr. Charles, I'm Dr. Charles Hermes. I'm a philosophy professor, academic advisor at University of Texas Arlington. I'm also here with ICE out of Tarrant. I'm also a political activist. I've got many stories I could share with you about how important it is to have a sanctuary campus. Actually, probably shouldn't share with you. Probably the story I most ought to share with you is my own. That's the one I've got the most liberty to. As a political activist, I've been targeted by national alt-right leaders. For the last two years, there've been multiple attacks on my job as well as my personal safety. Sorry. My son, my oldest son is a TCC student. They mistook my son as a gay lover and targeted him. But halfway through this semester, I finally got to the point where I realized the attacks were over. And this should have been a very happy moment for me, but instead it became a moment where I ended up reliving a lot of the suffering that I undergone over the last two years. But like every dark cloud, there's always a silver lining. And in my case, the silver lining was that it was so public, the attacks that happened on me, that many students at UTA knew what was happening. And many of our undocumented students, who had nowhere to turn before, started appearing in my office. I think I learned through this process what it means to be an educator. I think I learned that what students suffer most from isn't just their academics, but often nightmares that they're dealing with. And it's my job as an educator to let them know that they're not alone, to let them know that I'm in their corner, to let them know that my office is always a safe space. It would be nice if my entire university was as well. So far, UTA's not made the right move here. I hope TCC will take the lead in showing that it really is a campus, like most community campuses, that puts their students first.
Daniel J. Bennett.
Daniel J. Bennett, 408 Pemberton, White Settlement, Texas. President Heed, if you'd let me know, I have 30 seconds left, I would appreciate it. I'm here tonight to talk about Tarrant Appraisal District Board Director's election. I'll be cast in your 294 votes this evening. You guys are the last vote of the evening, the last vote of the, of the cycle. I'm asking you tonight to split your votes between Kathryn Weilman and John Mollino. Kathryn Weilman is a good fit for the board. She's worked on the Bond Project for JPS. She's a good friend with some mayors I'm friends with, particularly Mayor Jacob out of Lakeside. They have shared commonality. They've disagreed, but she works with people. She's a great fit. Now, I want to tell you why John Mollino is important. I'm going to take you back to July 11th, 2018. A gentleman at Tarrant Appraisal District, his name was Michael Sivatson. He was a 30-plus-year employee, and he was illegally filming during a public hearing underneath a table, a second-degree felony. Long story short, he wasn't arrested till six days after the event. Only reason he was arrested was because the injured party filed with the Fourth Place. It is up to the chief appraiser to have acted that day. He was shown a video of the incident in progress. That's all I'll say. So I don't know at what level the board knew about this. So I waited till the 23rd of August of this year. I go to all the meetings. That was a budget hearing. Nobody from this body showed up to that budget hearing. Three people did, though. Fred Campos, HEB ISD trustee four, a gentleman named John from Hurst, and Harry Zimmer from Yulis. They heard me talk about this incident. It's very upsetting to me. I want to know why the police weren't called, why it took six days. But I explain in detail what happened that day to all the directors except one, that was John Mollino, because John Mollino wasn't there. He was absent that day. I handed a packet, an audio out to every director to back up my information. I laid a packet on John's empty chair seat. Don't know if he got it. Don't know what he was told, but I know this. The four people that were there was Mark Wood, Mike O'Donnell, Joe Potoff, Mike Lehman. Absent was Mollino. So I'm asking you tonight if you'll give 200 votes to Kathryn Weilman, that will put her on the board, and to reward John Mollino with 94-year votes. I appreciate your time. I have detailed information if you're interested, but with three minutes to go, I'm not going to burden you with July 11th, 2018. His adjudication was September 4th. He pleaded guilty in the arrest affidavit, and he pleaded guilty to the judge. He's on five years probation. It's public record. He had it on video. Nothing was hidden. And Mr. Potoff came out of executive session that day and said, "In America, you're innocent until you're proven guilty." He confessed, ladies and gentlemen. That was an uncalled-for comment, I believe, that day.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Now have a special presentation by none other than Mr. Pacheco.
Esteemed board members, once in a while, I have the great pleasure to acknowledge leadership, scholarship, and community service by our people. Today is such a day. I'm here to tell you about one of TCC's IT programs and its master archivist, Thomas Kellum. And finally, I'm here to tell you about one of the fruits borne from this program. As a quick backdrop, TCC's Record Management Program is a district-wide program mandated by both the state and federal law. This program is responsible for assisting the college in managing its records and information assets in support of the college's missions, history, and regulatory requirements. Tom belongs to this Record Management Program and is under the leadership of Nigel Parker. The historical component of TCC's Record Management Program, which operates under the direction of Tom, is the Archives Program, of which a major component is the College District Archives. Since retiring from the city of Fort Worth and joining TCC in 2011, Tom has done a superlative job of upstarting, developing, and managing the College Archive Program. College Archive Program, Tom is tasked with collecting and preserving the college's history and any records of permanent value, and managing the Heritage Room Special Collection. So during the course of Tom's duty and extracurricular activities, whatever that is, Tom started a special project. The signed book you have in front of you was a four-year collaborative effort between TCC and Texas Christian University. This book is now available for purchase on Amazon. Additionally, we have signed copies for the cabinet in my office. My colleagues, please come by after the board meeting to pick up your copy. To explain more about the book, I've asked its co-editor, Mr. Tom Kellum, to come and say a few words. Tom?
Good evening. I'll try to give you a brief synopsis of what that's all about with the spontaneous remarks I have in my pocket. The, the collection in question is some records from the Fourth Police Department. It covers the years 1873 to 1912. There are two court docket books, two large scrapbooks with wanted notices. The wanted notices cover 1892 to about 1906 or '07. There is a volume, a bound volume, of detective magazines. The detective was the official journal of the American Police Department's associations in the, in, towards the end of the 19th century and through the early 20th century. And it was, you know, they were trying to make professionalized police departments, and that's, that was the object of that journal. So it gives a, covers about 40 years in the history of a, a, a police department as it transitioned from a small town, which 1873 was the year the city was incorporated. You know, there were probably less than 1,500 people there. Where, where as you get up into 1912, Fort Worth was pretty much industrializing. It was a transportation hub. And in those 40 years, there were tremendous changes taking place, which are reflected in that collection. And it's a national, national collection. The wanted notices were sent at the Fourth Police Department from other police departments and detective agencies all over the country. And we pulled 50 notices out of the later volume because it had pictures and they looked cool. And, and got some graduate student slaves, local historians, and other volunteers that we, you know, press gained into service to write this for us for nothing. And, and it's, I can say it's, it's quality stuff. We had some TCC scholars working on this, a former board member, O.K. Carter, and it, and we're very pleased with the way it turned out. I wrote a couple of articles myself, but, and my colleague from TCU, from the Center for Texas Studies, wrote a couple. My, my personal favorite in this collection is one of the docket books, the 1873 to 1888, which is a list of, a record of arrests in, in the city by, this was the tenure of Jim Courtwright, by the way. And mainly, it covers drunken cowboys and, and bordello's, body houses, and then other low dives and houses of ill repute. It also gives a record of how much the fines were and what the cut was for the sheriff, the city secretary, the mayor, and, and other officials. And, and you got the feeling that there was a kind of ecology of circulating money going on here. You know, they would arrest all the gamblers and prostitutes, fine them, turn them loose, and probably, at the end of the day, walk down to Main Street and spend some of that money. Walk down to the acre, Hell's Half Acre, and spend some of that money. But aside from the coolness factor of this, it, it gives an insight, I think, into the, what was going on in a very crucial time in American history. There was a terrible depression going on in the 1890s. Police departments were trying to get their act together and come up with scientific identification systems. I found an article just the other day of, by, published in the detective trying to convince people. Am I done? Okay, okay. I tend to get, okay, a little over enthusiastic. But it was an article on fingerprints. And, and fingerprints was by no means a, a settled issue in those days. People did not believe that fingerprints did not change over time. And he had a, and, and he published an article showing fingerprints of his son from infancy to five to, to 10 and so on, showing that they did not change, and challenging the people to, to identify which was the five-year-old print and which was the older boy's print. And that's my story, and I'm sticking with it.
Thank you very much. We're, we're not allowed to comment on any of these things, but I know that Mr. Gates has done an analysis of the book, and none of us are in it. As far as he could tell. Now we'll consider approval of minutes for three meetings. First of all, the November 14th meeting. So moved. So moved, my Dr. Evans. Second by two people on the right, Dr. Morrison. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. The November 19th meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Greenhill, a second by Dr. Patrick. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. December 5th meeting. So moved. Motion by Dr. Morrison, second by Mr. Greenhill. Dr. Evans, second by Mr. Greenhill, and a comment by Dr. Morrison. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Trustee committee reports. First of all, we had a governance meeting where we discussed all the action items that we're going to consider tonight. So we had the opportunity to ask all kinds of questions and have a good discussion on every single one of these items. So if we go through these rather quickly, you understand that we've, we've looked at them very closely. Audit and finance, there was no meeting. Trustee activities, we'll start down Ken. Dr. Patrick.
I wish to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you so much for watching. We're very sweet. Okay. As we move toward the end of the year, it's always a good time to reflect on the accomplishments and successes of the past 12 months and look toward the future. And TCC has much to celebrate for 2019. In particular, there, there's been some impactful acts that have been felt, I think, throughout the community, and particularly by the countless contributions made by this community. And I just want to give you a sampling of a few of those that really call to me. 1,650 or 1,650 is the number, approximate number of scholarships awarded through the foundation totaling $1.6 million. 167,000 is the number of rides provided since the inception of the Easy Ride Partnership with Trinity Metro. 3,553 is the number of military-connected students, connected students with TCC. And 8,248 is the number of degrees and certificates in 2018 and 2019. And the projected economic impact with those folks that are completing is in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So what, to me, all of this adds up to is that there are countless lives have been enriched by the work that each and every one of you have done. And so I want to thank Chancellor Giovanini for his vision and for his encouragement and leadership, and all of you for, all of the work that you have done, because you're making a tremendous impact in our city, in our county.
Okay. As we move toward the end of the year, it's always a good time to reflect on the accomplishments and successes of the past 12 months and look toward the future. And TCC has much to celebrate for 2019. In particular, there's been some impactful acts that have been felt, I think, throughout the community, and particularly by the countless contributions made by this community. And I just want to give you a sampling of a few of those that really call to me. 1,650 or 1,650 is the number, approximate number of scholarships awarded through the foundation totaling $1.6 million. 167,000 is the number of rides provided since the inception of the Easy Ride Partnership with Trinity Metro. 3,553 is the number of military connected students, connected students with TCC. And 8,248 is the number of degrees and certificates in 2018 and 2019. And the projected economic impact with those folks that are completing is in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So what, to me, all of this adds up to is that there are countless lives have been enriched by the work that each and every one of you have done. And so I want to thank Chancellor Giovanini for his vision and for his encouragement and leadership, and all of you for, all of the work that you have done, because you're making a tremendous impact in our city, in our county, in our communities. And I just appreciate your commitment to this, to this college and to those students, and for all the generous contributions. And I want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
As we are almost ready to take a break and to refresh and refuel, I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Giovanini and his staff, district and campus-based staff for awesome work in support of the State of the Six, which is a community visioning forum for the purpose of sustainable community engagement. It was held in the beautiful Rotunda at TCC Trinity River Campus, and it benefited not only from good attendance, community support, TCC early college high school students, TCC regular students, faculty, and staff. We enjoyed a community drum circle. If you haven't been a part of, that was led by Dr. Brown, professor of psychology from South Campus. It was a really exhilarating experience. Our chancellor provided excellent overview of the district's plan for the use of the $825 million. That was approved by the voters, and that was very much appreciated by those in attendance. We also had engaged staff, TCC South, Dr. Parker, math professor, to direct people to have table talks, and also Dr., and it wasn't programmed, but it was a perfect answer, for Dr. Jenkins to talk about the vision program, because our state representative, Nicole Cayer, actually had a question about that. And thanks to Board Member Ayala, we have a new potential partnership going that's going to greatly enhance that program. We know there's significant need. So I'm just so grateful for all of the work that each of you do. I appreciated this opportunity to share some of the great news. And you see that we presented Doc, Judge Davis, Judge L. Clifford Davis, with a shirt that was from the TCC Connect Program. He's, he's going to wear that T-shirt under his suit to work tomorrow. So he's 95 years old. So we appreciated, it was an awesome opportunity to continue to tell the story of TCC to the community and to continue to garner their support. And so thanks to all of you, and as you take time away to spend time with your family and friends, or away from your family and friends, whichever refreshes you, I want to encourage you to know that you're very important, and the work that you do every day matters in the lives of so many. Thank you so much, Chancellor, and staff.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Mr. Greenhill.
You want me to be quick with this? I was the overachiever this month, so.
That's okay. You're always the overachiever.
Well, first of all, I attended the, attended the Texas Higher Education Board, the Bush Board Conference.
Well, there it is. There's our selfie of those who were there. Nancy Curay and Judith Gallagher, Marcel, Marcel Kerr was also there. It was a very good event. The, the hotel wasn't all that good, but there were, but it was a really, it was good to meet. My big takeaway, the keynote speaker for the first day luncheon was the new commissioner of the TH ECB, Harrison Keller. He seems to be very open-minded to some of the issues that face us, in particular dual credit. And, and we're going to, he's been invited to our CCATT Annual Conference in, in Corpus Christi this year. We're going to, we're going to try to educate him. Also attended the joint with, with Kenneth, with trustee Barr, the joint enrollment agreement signing at the, at the South Campus with Texas Wesleyan College, University. The agreement is a dual-admission transfer pathway that will help students make a smooth transition from TCC to Texas Wesleyan. And there is a, a great picture of the whole group that was there. It was a very proud event. Oh, you, you were there too, Mr. Chair. You were there, you're in the middle of the picture. Yeah, so were you. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't see. Anyway, and Kenneth Barr, and it was a very good event. I'm, I'm very proud of that. I also attended a, the CCATT trustee leadership seminar in San Antonio on December the 6th. We had some, there's Senator Jose Menendez from the district in San Antonio. Senator gave us some very good insight and about what we need to do to make progress with the best interests of our community colleges. More about that later. I had a very, one of the presentations was by Angela Gutierrez Menendez with the Alamo College District. She gave a presentation on her transfer guidelines, on the Alamo District's transfer guidelines. My big takeaway from that is something that was pretty simple. The biggest barrier to the progress in their pathway guidelines is that apparently the, by law, credits are required to be transferable, but there's a loophole, maybe, that says that they're not applicable. And that's something we need to fix. They're not applicable. And I'm going to meet with somebody on that. I'm going to get that statute, and we're going to fix that. It's a loophole that we need to, to change. And that's Roberto Zarate, and I guess that's, I'm wearing my Christmas tie by then. That's good. Finally, I, I attended this week the Joint Legislative Planning Committee of TACC, CATT, and the Texas Community College Teachers Association in Houston after the SACS Conference. And there we are with Representative Dan Huberty. He's the chairman of the Public Education Committee in the, in the Texas House. And he gave us some similar views of Senator Menendez. What we have to do is the trustees and, and the TACC and the Teachers Association need to get together and really advocate for our, our best interest. These are the trustees, some of them on our, on our board. Thank you very much. That's my, my report.
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill. And thank you for your service. We know, as, as president of CAT, it takes a lot of time. Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm going to get reimbursement for my non-bellable hours? Is that, is that part of the deal? You don't think so?
I don't think so. Dr. Evans, moving right along.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. I had the opportunity on yesterday to attend the signing of the MOU with Talton State, again, making a dual-admission and transfer pathway easier for our students. And of course, congratulations to our chancellor and to his entire staff helping to make this happen. And because of this, our students are eligible to receive their bachelor's degrees in a number of fields. So that was exciting, good to be a part of that and just watching that happen. So that's my report, sir.
Thank you. We might note that our dual credit and our early college high school programs are really making a mark and making a difference in our community. The Community Impact Magazine has an excellent article on Northeast Campus College Collegiate Academy, and it's just outstanding. So that, that is a tribute to all of us. So thank you for your work. We'll now consider the action items. Number five, Mr. Prather. Oh, a substitute. Consideration approval of contract with Cable Plumbing LLC to perform South Campus Sewer Rehabilitation Phase II in the amount of $137,365.75.
Yes, this is another end-of-useful-life replacement of a 50-year-old system. This is phase two, of which there'll be a, a few more, but we're working from south in the campus to north, and we're about halfway.
Questions, discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Greenhill makes a motion, second by Dr. Evans. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item six, consideration approval of contract with Chambers Engineering LLC to perform South Campus pavement repairs in the amount of $209,884.40.
Yes, these are repairs around campus in about 18 locations. Again, old infrastructure that needs to be replaced, that has more than served the district.
Questions, discussion? Motion by Dr. Morrison, second by Dr. Patrick. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item seven, consideration approval of contract with Environmental Systems to perform Northwest Campus Fire Academy and Special Use Facility Direct Digital Controls Upgrade in the amount of $455,251.74.
Yes, this is one more end-of-useful-life replacement of a system, getting it close to 20 years old, and it'll allow us a lot more flexibility and control and efficiency when we replace the system. It's actually two buildings. It's the academy, as well as a little mock fire station next to it.
Questions, discussion?
So moved, sir.
Motion by Dr. Evans, second by Dr. Morrison. We'll change that to Ms. Ayala. I was looking at you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, consideration approval of sale of Northeast Campus 1.126-acre surplus parcel located at the northeast corner of West Harwood Drive and Precinct Line Road to Bassem Al Nembri and Raaba Kay Nembri in the amount of $300,000 to be paid to TCC.
Yes, we have a potential buyer for this surplus property at the Northeast Campus. The proposed use is a coffee shop. This action will begin their due diligence period, and hopefully we'll get to a closing.
Yeah, thank you. Questions, discussion?
So moved, sir.
Motion by Dr. Evans. Second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Mr. Pacheco. Item nine, consideration approval of annual payment to SHI for Microsoft Campus Agreement and License Upgrade, upgrades in the amount of $1,62,657.10.
Yes, this is our annual payment to Microsoft, actually through SHI. It's part of a true-up, as well as a upgrade from their A3 licenses to their A5 licenses, which gives us much greater capabilities for the school and for the students.
Okay, questions, discussion? Looking for a motion? Motion by Ms. Ayala, second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We will table item number 10 and go into closed session, and then after closed session, come back and, and take up item 10. Item 11, consideration approval of resolution canceling the January 16, 2020 regular meeting to the Tarrant County College Board of Trustees. Carol?
Good evening, trustees, President Heatt, Chancellor. We have a resolution before you to cancel the regularly scheduled board meeting next month, January. We will continue to have a governance committee meeting, however.
Questions, discussion? Motion by Dr. Evans, second by Ms. Ayala. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 12, consideration approval of City of Fort Worth Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Four Tax Exemption Resolution.
Yes, Tarrant County College is a participant in this tax increment financing district. State law requires for the city to be able to honor a historic tax exemption for the city's tax rate only, that it requires a specific approval by the other members of the taxing district. So this will take care of that.
Motion to approve by Mr. Barr, second by Mr. Greenhill. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item number 13, consideration approval of amended and restated MOU related to responsibilities of the Tarrant County College Foundation.
Yes, so this is the memorandum of understanding that governs the basic relationship between the college and the foundation, outlines roles and responsibilities. The amendment that is, is included allows us in the future to have additional entrepreneurial activities in, in partnership with the foundation, but those would all be under the direction of this board.
Questions, discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Evans, second by Mr. Greenhill. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 14, motion approval of a mineral management agreement and interim investment instructions with the Tarrant County College Foundation. And I notice a motion to amend?
Yeah, I'll, I'll cover it, and then I'll, I'll turn over. So, yeah, so this is a mineral management agreement that will replace, replace all prior agreements associated with our relationship with the foundation. It will identify the college district's mineral investment policy as the governing guidance to those investments. As you're aware, we're in the process of working with our financial advisors to amend that. So as a result, this, this action actually includes interim investment instructions to the foundation while we work towards adopting an amended policy later this, later in the spring. I did make an error, actually, in one section of it. Section 3A references the audit that is required of the foundation. It mentions that the auditor is required to ensure that it adheres to the investment policy. It erroneously reflected the foundation's investment policy versus the college's. And so we, we've made that correction, and I've offered some amendment language to trustee Barr.
Okay. Motion to approve the original?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move approval of item 14 with the following amendment to section 3A. Section 3A shall be amended to require adherence to the college board's mineral investment policy rather than the foundation's investment policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask one question? This says college board, and I think elsewhere in the document it refers to college district.
So probably should say college district, or college district board, because it'll be a, and a policy that you adopt.
Okay. Then I would amend my motion to say, to describe it as the college district board's mineral investment policy rather than the foundation's investment policy.
We have a motion as amended. Second by Dr. Evans. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 15, consideration approval of write-off of unreimbursed student fees associated with the veterans enrolled in pilot training program FY 2014 to through 2017, the amount of $1,112,812, not to exceed.
Yes, so Tarrant County College has a number of veteran students that participate in our pilot training program. The Veterans Administration actually retroactively denied reimbursement for certain expenditures associated with that program. In order to make those student accounts whole, as well as to acknowledge in the district's books that we have returned certain funds to the Veterans Administration, this action is necessary.
Motion by Dr. Morrison, a second by Dr. Evans. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Monthly financial report.
Yeah, so you have the standard monthly financial report in front of you. We're about a quarter of the way through the year, and so you'll notice that our expenditures and our income are on track for that. I'll also cover, in, in your packet, you also have the investment policy, or the investment report that demonstrates that the continued performance there of a yield of about 2.04%. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one. New employee introduction, Susan. Alanis?
Sorry, got it. I could've stayed up here. So Gloria? Okay. Very pleased to announce the appointment of Gloria Maddox Powell as the executive director of Human Resources. We are very pleased to have her here. Gloria comes to TCC from the Dallas Independent School District, where she served as the deputy chief operations officer. In this role, she led organizational change efforts for over 5,000 employees, completed a division-wide compensation restructure that increased employee recruitment and retention. implemented a year-long management training initiative that focused on diversity and inclusion, and started the district's first transportation services department. Gloria has implemented diversity and inclusion programs, served as a senior HR manager for faculty and academic services, and interim associate vice president for human resources. She's also taught business and human resources courses as an adjunct professor. Gloria earned her master's degree in business administration and human resources development from Webster University, and a bachelor of science in management from the University of, of Phoenix. She also holds certifications as a certified program manager, a career development facilitator, a certified diversity professional, and as a disc behavior coach. So please help me welcome her to our team, we're very pleased to have her.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Heed, board members and Chancellor Givernini. I am certainly excited for the opportunity to join the TCC family. As a Mansfield resident, it's important to be able to contribute to not just the community that I live in, but the students and their families and, and higher education, you know, being a first-generation college student, it's a, held a special place in my heart. And I'm excited for the opportunity to work with my colleagues to serve our students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
So once a year, we ask the campuses to identify and lend artwork that we can highlight in our office in the hallway down here, and the student, faculty, and staff artwork has been displayed on an annual basis, and it trades out each year. Those that you see up on the screen prior to the meeting and now are examples of that artwork. And it really is, is, is very rewarding to see this talent. And when people come to visit up here in the office, often take note of the artwork that's done. And so the, just an example of the excellence and creativity that exists here at TCC. This PowerPoint is a reflection of that, as indicated, and, and if you want, many of you have already been down, but you're certainly welcome to come down afterwards and take a look. But we are very fortunate this evening to have some of the artists here tonight, and I asked them to stand and be recognized as I called them. Jessica Bates. Stay, stay standing, Jessica, thank you. Dulce Cabuto. Sharon Covington. Jonah Davis. Marco Antonio Jimenez. Janet Lundquist. Stephanie McDowell. Patrick McElroy. Sima Magadama. Dylan Robinson. And our very own Robbie Jeffy. Robbie, stand up, please. We think we got everyone, everyone that said they were coming came. Is there anyone that came that didn't say they were coming? So, yes, would you all please file around if you will, and, so we can get a picture? Lynn, you want to architect that, please?
The TCC Board will conduct a closed meeting as authorized by section 551 of the Texas Government Code in order to A, seek the advice of its attorneys, B, deliberate real property matters, C, deliberate, deliberate personnel matters, or deliberate security devices or security audits. We will temporarily adjourn, we'll come back, and there will be an action item.